Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the menaces in 2007-2011, ready to meet?
All right.
All those in favor of approving the menaces?
I have.
All opposed? The menaces are approved. Anybody sign up for the comments?
No, sir.
All right. Presentations. Mr. Roach?
Thank you, President Matthews. It's a very glorious day or evening for what we are honored to do. I do represent the Board and this is the Board's idea. We're trying to develop a tradition of recognizing those that are in first place in the state have done an outstanding job, whether it's academic or athletic. I would like to start with the student Chase Rotherham. He won first place in the 2011 Skills USA State Competition. Chase is competing at the present in the national competition this week in Kansas City. His family is here to accept the award that will be permanently placed in the trophy case of Lincoln County High School. His mother, his attendance tonight, as well as the grandparents, if they could step forward, please. Again, I would like to say that this, the Board, and they are letting me have the honor of giving it to you, but it's first place, 2011 Skills USA Competition, Chase Rotherham, Lincoln County High School with instructor, Tim Elliott. Here to you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is to be placed or given to Mr. Bill Linville. If you want to take it home, take some pictures, or leave it here and we'll give it to him, whichever way you prefer. It's fine with us. Okay? Congratulations. Congratulations. And I would like somehow to get the Board in this picture because it is theirs, you know what I mean? They're the main ones, so...
If I were to come down here with service...
While it's coming, I would like to say, you know, this is an honor. And Chase, it was a success, but it is a successful award. He was in the 13th year program. He had a learning disability. And I'm so thankful that he had the opportunity to be able to do this, but not only, like I said, not only was it Chase, it was the ones who worked with him and it was the Board and it was the participation that they had, that he could have the opportunity to do it. And thank you.
You all can kind of stand, you all don't have to get in your seats, you might be...
Yeah, more to the...
Yeah, just kind of hang out. Um, you can hang out. Next, I'd like to recognize Joseph Atkins and Chris Cory and Jerry Means, instructor.
Kameen.
Kameen, I'm really messed up. First place, 2011 Ford Tripway Student Auto Skills. Both of these students, as well as their instructor, Jerry Kameen, traveled to Dearborn, Michigan for a national competition last week. While they did not come home with a trophy, we are extremely proud of how they represented the state of West Virginia in this competition. Chris is not here tonight due to his military commitment. This award will be permanently placed in the trophy case. And I've got to say, the picture with him holding the trophy...
Oh, sorry.
That's...
Maybe Joseph could hold it.
Congratulations, gentlemen. And I want you to notice the little hood on there that represents what you have done. So congratulations to both of you. Keep one hand on that, hold him up.
And as everybody else, I want to, I just want to say something because it'd be hard not to. As any coach or anything knows, if you've got a good team, it makes us look good. With Joseph and Chris, they did. They made the main kind of shine up there in the state championship. We won that. So, I'm going to miss him. But he does, he starts at University of Northwestern Ohio Automotive College in August the 22nd. He's won over $63,000 of scholarships and so he has a golden opportunity ahead of him.
I'd like to say I was in attendance during this competition and you might not think it's interesting, but you're on, we stood up, we were right there cheering, encouraging. And I also want to say that Mr. Kameen, this is not his first award. This is the first time he's won this competition, but he sends many students on to great locations and careers. And he also wins many competitions and we're lucky to have both of these instructors that we talked about. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
At last, due to the large number of them, I'm honored tonight to recognize a first state championship, the first for Lincoln County High School athletic team, the Lincoln County Lady Panther State Triple A Softball Champions 2011. We have with us, and I want to name everyone, if you please just kind of stand up or say hello or something to us. And if you're not, don't worry. Hedy Beals, Kelsey Browning, Megan Bruntfield, Alyssa Cook.
You just had to mess up my mind there.
Morgan Hutchison, Kayla Jeffers, Alex Lawson.
Hey.
Brooke May, Casey Jo Owens, Amy Parsons, Sarah Pennington, Brooke West, Amanda Salmons. And also our coaches and support staff that's with us tonight. Dwayne Estep, head coach, is, I think, into his new career. He's head coach at...
Mingo Central.
Mingo Central. Emery Atkins, Tommy Barrett. There you go.
Howdy, howdy, howdy.
Keith Cook, Rod Hoover, Cynthia Lucas, Bill Miller, Bo Parsons, and Craig Roberts.
He's working out of town.
Yep.
Well, congratulations. And I have learned something, that there were several of us got to go up and see the team to victory on one of the games and it was awesome. You couldn't help but get excited. And I'm going to imitate just for a second, hoping the camera won't see me. But I get excited when I see Mr. Cook as a cheerleader. But when the girls would hit a, you know, a good homerun or a big hit, he'd get going. And everybody would stand... Get the boss out of the seat. Can't you get that?
I got it off.
This is a...
Who's this coming in?
Morgan Hutchison.
Morgan Hutchison. Congratulations to you as well. As well, this is our softball recognition award. It has a softball and it says, "First state championship in Lincoln County High School history." And it has the players and the coaches and support staff. And again, the Board wanted something to show all of you their appreciation and this will forever be in a trophy case like the other two. So, would you all please, whoever's going to represent this? Come on, girls, come on.
We can all get it.
Be careful when you hold it. We don't want to drop them.
Congratulations.
You better.
Congratulations.
Hey, I can actually stand between the two.
You're back.
Great.
Three, two, one.
Donna, Donna Carr.
I didn't know you were watching.
Very anxious.
I was just standing.
You sit there.
Great.
Yes, yes.
Three, two, one.
He's a confident photographer, just take one.
I'm greedy, I take a lot.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I cut somebody's hair.
Yeah.
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 Donna, Donna Carr.
You sit there. Great.
Yes, yes.
Three, two, one.
He's a confident photographer, just take one.
I'm greedy, I take a lot.
Yeah. Only thing I want to say to the board, I know we've had a lot of support from you all on building this field. If you haven't went and seen this field, it is absolutely the best field in Winston State of West Virginia as far as a high school field. So you need to come and see it. It is a fine field. So if you haven't yet seen it, we've worked hard on it. And it is really what brought this championship is this field. So I know we want the football field and everything, but I think that will bring us together as a county. And you wouldn't know the support we had in Lincoln County. When we come back from this state championship, it was just like the Fourth of July parade out there in Amherst. We had, we had no idea that this was going to happen. So I just want to thank all you all for your support and I'm sure these girls do too.
Thank you, Keith.
Now we need to work on the football field and the facilities now, so.
But we certainly aren't going to give up on you girls. I was there with your big win and I was so proud of you for just being out there, even if you had not won. But when you won, I just couldn't keep from crying because it's a first and you guys worked so hard and you deserve every bit of it. It makes me still want to cry. But I really love all of you.
Well, the crowd, if you've seen the crowd, how they reacted and was backing us, it was unreal.
Takes a lot of support, a lot of motivation. These girls, they work hard. I tell you, they're an honor to coach. They're an honor to coach.
So again, sir. It's going to be a tough act to follow, isn't it?
Maybe not, maybe not.
To all of you, instructors and parents and students and staff, it's, it's, we just want more. And the board would be thrilled to bring these things and bring you all in and I think it's tradition, it's a beginning and thanks to you all, you started it. And these will be the first, but hopefully many to follow in the trophy case. And if we have to build new cases for trophies, that's a, be a wonderful thing to do. And we wish you the best and again, thank you for representing us in style, class. You all really, they got the sportsmanship trophy, as you well know, that means a lot. I saw the way they conducted themselves up there as professionals and it was just wonderful to see. So again, on behalf of the board and all of us, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
You all are more than welcome to stick around for the administrative section as we go through our, and as we go through our agenda. Or, or if you wa, if you would like to, if you want to leave, this would be a good time to do it. Just to give you a heads up.
We got ball practice. This is part of our group weeks. The upcoming freshman.
Hey, Tom. Hey, Tom.
Never, never did.
I did think, I did think that that was in black and white.
Never did receive, uh, never did receive nothing other than what Trish and, you know, Bill, it was just a, uh, verbal, right, right, in English. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Ken.
All right.
Before you start, I love that imitation. Now I'm getting my words.
Good to hear.
All right, let's go through the administrative sections. Everybody in good shape? Everybody good, everybody ready? A is contract services agreement with Autism Service Center to provide services. And I think this is paid through the special ed funds. B is the extended contract with Bright Futures Learning Services. And this is also, I guess this is tutoring services and autism, autism services.
Now this is just to fulfill the remainder of the contract.
Yeah, I read that. And that's paid through Medicaid funds. C is additional, additional employment for some of the service personnel. I think this is from secretaries. D is additional employment days for some, some personnel, some more personnel.
Mr. Mathieu.
Go ahead.
If I may, may make a correction. Trish, on the Guyan Valley situation, did we get any clarification on that?
No, while we were in the meeting, Mr. Brennan came and left and he went to a conference. I had not spoken with him.
Is this your own seat? Is that where you're at?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to remove until we get more information. I just have a question. We'll put it back on the agenda for the 27th. I'm not sure if five days is what I would like to give there, so I'd just like to remove Kathy Atkins from the agenda. It'll be put back on again on the 27th. Until I get some clarification, please.
Now, has she been there since Sandy left?
Yes, yes. But the question is now to share, the question is, there's 205-day contract. And you put five days, you put two in the front, three in the back, three in the front, two in the back. And all five days here, since the school had already opened. My question is, do we give five or should we give two or three? Because next year, she gets five. So how's she going to split them up? I want to make sure I don't give too much. So that's my only question and we're working on that. So thank you, Mr. Mathieu.
All right. So C was service personnel, D was professional personnel, E is how they travel for the following personnel. Does anybody have any questions on E? Everybody good with E? F, the contract with West Virginia Department of Health and Resources.
If I may, I would like to remove F from the agenda until we meet with a representative. I will share with you, several years ago, there were some issues with some people and our students, possible comments and things. I want to make sure that's all been, we're secure with that and we don't, are not liable for something. So if the conditions are met, when we meet with the representative verbally, then we'll proceed with this one also. But I want to make sure I don't put the board in a bad position until we get some kind of agreement made. Because of a history that occurred several years ago, that's why we stopped this.
All right.
We stopped. And now the question is, do we begin? But I don't mind that until we get some agreements. Thank you.
Uh, G, rescind the action approved for May the 24th for the installment of the aluminum wrapped sign at the Interstate County High School. And to approve the installation of four thick inch marble, black marble sign measuring four feet by 10 feet. All right. Can you clarify this?
Yes, sir. I followed the board's instructions and I even, with the questions raised by Carol and questions raised by Donna and all of you. I looked at the construction of the sign, that means the interior of aluminum wrap. I did not seem satisfactory. I went to another sign company with ZMM. They were going to do $15,000. And I said, well, during this time, I went past a cemetery and there was a marker up there. And it had, it's black granite, which we have on this and the letters are four inches. And you can see it very clearly, which would take care of Donna's concerns about seeing the primary care center in the southern West Virginia. And also it took care of Carol's concerns. The granite, the speckled granite, it would not show up, but with this black granite, it'll be beautiful and last forever, longer than the school will last, most likely. So that is the reason this has transpired. It's already been ordered, but it could have been canceled. But I had it ordered, they have to cut it. It comes out of Georgia. It takes several weeks to polish it and do all that. We're going to have inscription engraved on both sides. We'll use the brick, again, the light brick of Lincoln County High School. And I think you'd be very proud to be having that sign and hopefully my legacy will live on, be positive. But I apologize for a little going back and forth on this, but as you know, you and we both want it to be right. And I do believe this is the right call and hopefully you agree with it.
I think it's great that we can get the larger piece of granite. That wasn't an option before, we talked about it, so.
And black.
Yeah.
And the cost. And the cost. And by the way, nothing is, again, you will be, we are accepting responsibility of concrete on the base only. That's all.
That's the only cost to the school system.
And I've asked them, they wouldn't even have to do that, but for convenience sake and trying to get, you know, the bricks and everything done. It'd just be nice if the board would do that. It's minimal compared to what you will have.
I think that's, that suits me well. All right. H is the adoption of the following resolution. This is the bylaws and policies. I is to uphold the superintendent's suspension of pay of a teacher at Hamlin PK-8.
Yes, I can share an executive session at some point. If you wanted to pull that to later, I can share more information with you, but it could be at the end of the meeting. There is still an investigation going on and.
Time, time is, we probably do need to vote on it.
But I mean, going to executive session for more discussion, I think would be appropriate.
Yes, go through J, then we'll go to the executive session, what do you say? Then we'll come back out, you know? And J is a contracted service agreement with Jimmy Bernie.
Or maybe Beern, I think.
What is it?
Beern.
Beern, okay. To provide applied behavior analysis for June the 22nd through June the 30th.
For these special education funds, I'm assuming.
Well, it doesn't say, does it?
This is already, yes, this is already existing.
Just extending his contract.
Contract.
Special education, yes.
For those many days, because we already start July 1. Good question.
All right. You all ready to make motion during executive session?
We're going to vote on these others, Paul is on the execution or you want to?
Finances, new finances, come back.
Let's go ahead and new finances. Go ahead.
Uh, we have invoices, totally $910,240.17 on all the invoices. If you guys have any questions on anything, no one's already asked off her questions. We also have our summer payroll schedule to be approved.
Is there any questions on the finances?
We need to approve finances.
I'll say. All is in favor, refers to financial segment? All opposed? Motion carries? Personnel schedule. Ms. Lucas, go through that.
Starting with section A, employment of short and long-term professional personnel. B, employment of short, long-term administrative professional personnel. C, transfer our service personnel. D, we have some resignations and retirements. And the bottom, we abolished two positions. If there are any questions on any of those, just please ask. Then on the second page, it's an addendum. A resignation and retirement for a bus operator. And abolish two extracurricular positions. And then an adoption of the job description and you have the job description as the last two pages.
Just the extracurricular athletic posting for football and assistant football, they're being abolished?
We inadvertently posted those when we already had before and hired.
Okay.
We were listing lots of positions.
I was going to say, I didn't think that.
The other could was for lack of student participation.
Yes, a summer position.
That's all. Do you all have any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedule.
I'll say.
All is in favor to approve the personnel schedule? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? All right, now we are. Board's concerns and comments? Do you have any concerns or comments? Anything you want to say?
The only thing I have, and I think Donna has spoken with Paula Nelson also, and it's regarding some of her children. And I actually have not read this, I just grabbed it off the email whenever I left, but it's an email that was sent to you. So I think maybe you might be able to explain it better than I can.
Because of this kind of a new beginning with the award being given to first place, there was.
What were we talking about?
It's an email that I received from Paula Nelson that she had sent to Mr. Roach and I thought he could explain it to you.
About students being recognized, like we did tonight, first place, what qualifies. I've sent an email out recently to you all and I shared it today with the curriculum team about setting up some guidelines that we go by, what qualifies, who would qualify, to make sure that you are not giving things out which should not be given out, but yet also recognizing people. So not knowing the details and being so late after these have already been done, the curriculum team will set up guidelines as a draft, bring them to the board, let you all look at them and have input, and then go from there. And we don't want to miss anyone from being recognized, but yet we want to make sure it's, it's something special. And we do not know the details nor eyes, so it will be forthcoming. And if, if she qualifies or a student qualifies, then by all means, they'll be recognized, but it'll be, it couldn't be tonight. It would have to be later, either next month or August. But you'll be brought back and be a part of that because your input is needed, because you are giving these recognitions out.
She's a speech and debate teacher.
Correct.
And what is she saying? That she has a student that should receive recognition?
But we're not, we're, it's not a, we're not saying no.
I understand.
We just could not, yes, that's the idea, but we could not recognize them due to the timeframe that we were informed. And also, we want to make sure that any student presented to us goes through a criteria where they qualify. So you are not giving out that's not deserving in the sense of what you see here tonight. But they're also recognizing if they want to get certificates, you know, if you place them certain things, you get certificates by the board. But some kind of criteria that you all will be happy with and everyone knows how they're going to qualify or the criteria behind it. So I didn't want to rush into it and do something and create a worse situation. Rather wait and then do it with some thought behind it and some input behind it.
The state winners in speech and debate.
Has this already occurred?
Yeah.
That's why I was, I asked because of Paula Nelson. And I was going to school whenever they had the, like, the after-school program and they had the pictures of them all. That's the only way that I would.
That they were recognized by the paper.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
Yeah, but. Take the shirt. All right, do you all have anything?
I don't have.
Anything?
I've regarded that. The only other thing I was going to ask is, it relates to the administrative thing there. On the policies, if there were any comments or any?
We did not receive any comments ourselves. If the board has, like, grammatical mistakes, we would love to have those and make those changes. But we didn't.
Comments from anyone? No.
I was under the impression.
You got comments from us? Yeah, I made your changes. Okay.
I was.
We didn't get from any teacher or public, anybody else.
I was under the impression at the high school that the faculty senate had some revisions to the graduation policy.
Mr. Roach gave that to me today, so.
Well, that's what, okay.
But we also, so you know, I think, and I'm going to say this, it could be quarterly or semi-annually, there'll be updates. And so we have an update that's going to be coming down the road to you all prior to school starts. Those, what you're talking about, if things need to be changed, it'll be done that way. Instead of trying to have, you know, make changes and you never know what's in place, there'll be times when we make the changes. And there's more changes to be coming because there's another update out.
The only reason that particular one that I ask about is because it was voted upon by the faculty senate at the high school before school was out. And since it contains the graduation requirements, however we deal with that needs to be dealt with before school starts.
And again, that was stated today in the curriculum meeting and Ms. Lucas, Mr. Midkiff both aware of that, as well as Brenda, so that will be done. But somewhere you have to start.
Well, I understand what, that's my concern.
Trying to get this approved, then the updates come and changes go out on comment, but that will be done quickly because it was, it could be done the first meeting in July.
Well, that one in particular, like I said, because of, when school starts, everybody needs to know what their rules are.
Correct.
It'll have to be in handbooks and everything else.
And I, and I want to knock the.
I've got a question. This graduation department, how's it going to be affected? Does it interfere with state law?
Is it grading or?
There was some.
Steve, you're in the woods, man.
It dealt with whether, you know, students receive half, they receive credit for half each semester. So they receive a half of credit for each semester. So if they successfully attain or complete both, they get a credit for that year. The issue came up, I think, of whether, excuse me, what happens if a student passes one semester, gets that half credit, but doesn't pass the second semester? And at the high school, they have a credit recovery program where they can go back and make that up. And, but then there was some discussion, I guess, among the staff there, of whether or not you should merge. You know, if I get a, an 80 one semester and I get a 60 the next semester, well, one of them's not a passing grade. But if I can merge those two together, I have a passing grade. So I think they had some discussion whether or not that should be permitted. And my understanding was they did not think that that was appropriate. So it was, it was the faculty senate's method of how they were going to address this. So you would just grant, gain the credit for each semester and you would get that half. Now, the part that you might have failed, you would have the opportunity to go through credit recovery and make that up at some future time. And I think they're going to eventually put a limit on how long they, or recommend to the board that, you know, you're going to have a year to do that or something. Then if you don't do that, you would actually have to go back and take that other semester again. So that's why.
I think that's logical.
And also, there's two sides to every issue, so I just want to let the board know that when that comes to the table, you're going to have one side giving the pros and cons of what it does and this side pros and cons. And that's where you make a decision, but you all, you don't make a revision automatically and send it out for comment without much thought into the, for what, how it hurts or helps the students. So you look at the staff's side, you look at the student's side, and that will be done in this process.
Well, the only reason I say that is because the faculty senate has made their recommendation.
Right.
And at some point, they will recommend that, I'm assuming, to us.
It's already been recommended, but yet we will take that up at the appropriate time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, at some point, it'll be recommended to the board.
Yeah, prior to, you know, this board or the school starting.
Right, that's my concern, is that when school starts, everybody knows, if I fail a semester, I need to want to have, I can make it up to you. So they'll know what the rules are.
Would it have to be in policy or could it be in administrative guideline?
It could be in administrative guideline. I, I just think the discussion on this is premature, because again, there's a lot of thought and a lot of issues that on both sides of this. And you just need to hear all that at appropriate time. But I'm not ready nor prepared to get into those, both sides of the issue. I just don't think it's a great time.
As long as Ms. Lucas is also ready to.
You've got 10 days.
She will be ready. She will be ready.
You've now put her on the spot.
Yeah.
I will be ready.
Is there any more, more? Go ahead.
At will, we got this information she hear about the mini band camp. And did you want to speak to us about that? The mini band camp?
Oh, yeah, I got that in the mail.
Not at this time. That was just for your information. And some of the things at the bottom, like for a stipend or something, if that's necessary, that will be forthcoming to the board. But again.
Well, they want to start it June 27th. I mean, what are we going to say? It's okay right now to do it? I mean, are they waiting for us to say, go ahead and do it?
No, the 27th, there should be something on the agenda for you.
They're going to start that day.
I know.
Okay.
But we're talking about stipends. Not that.
With transportation.
It's like, I don't get an email. I don't get emails.
I mean, I want them to do. I just want to know, do we need to go ahead and approve it?
Let me share with you, then we'll present it out to share with the board. At this point, that's all I have that to offer.
So if they start Monday and we provide transportation and food, instructors pay and everything, we can approve it?
On the 27th.
That evening?
Two o'clock.
What, two o'clock?
Hey, guys, I'm going to get.
I just want to be able to do it.
Hey, listen, if it's on the 27th and it's at two o'clock, I've already talked to Brenda. I'm not going to be able to be here because I have work, okay? I just want, I think you are going to have a forum. I just want to let you all know. Yeah, but I told her, I was like, listen, you know, you're going to have that, you have to have that meeting. I won't be there. I just want to let you know. I'm not blowing you all off. You know how it is. Well, you want to go ahead and approve? So let's see, we got the administrative section, the ones, basically the parts of the agenda that we should approve in administrative section, everything, but I am, let's see here.
Kathy Atkins and C.
Let me see here. F. And C. Kathy Atkins. All right, I'll make a motion, I was going to add this. I'll make a motion that we approve, will we approve items A, B, B, E, G, H, and J? And three items in C, Denise Hope, Rhonda Kermans, and Shirley Justice.
I'll say.
All is in favor to approve such items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we go to executive session concerning item I on suspension unemployment.
I second the motion. All is in favor to go to executive session?
Aye, I'll oppose. I'll make a motion to uphold the superintendent's suspension with pay of Susan Nocasta, a teacher at Hamlin PK-8 as provided by the law based on allegations of inappropriate conduct in effect of May 12th, 2011, until an investigation is completed.
I second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seeing that we have no other concerns or comments.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
From June 27th to two o'clock.
All is in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All opposed?